It's seven oh one, should we start the meeting? Okay. So hello, everyone. I am acting as chair for the day. Should we call this meeting? In order, yeah.
Here.
Here.
Fear.
Here. Here.
Here.
Thank you, Bruce. Has everyone got a chance to look at the agenda? Are there any changes?
I wonder if we should add introduction of new members.
Oh, yeah, sorry, it was already in there, sorry. I thought, yeah. Oh, yeah, so, sorry. There is already, so, yes, there is introduction of new members, so.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
I didn't look that high up.
Yeah, I messed up. Do you guys want to go ahead and just talk about yourselves?
Sure.
Chris, we should all.
Hello. Yeah, okay. Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Cho Shih Huang, and I will serve as newest member of this board. I'm kind of excited and also kind of nervous, so. Yeah, so I currently working is MTD as the transportation analyst planner. I used to, I was born and raised in China. I spent all my five years in Shanghai as my undergrad. I'm a big fan of city walk and bike and shared bikes, public transportation. That's why I work in MTD now. So, yeah, I'm very happy and excited to serve this board, and I'm very interested in all the topics we talked about here. And good evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tommy Griscum. Tommy's my nickname, by the way. My official first name is Richard, so if you see Richard, don't be confused. That's actually me. So my professional background is kind of different from what we'll be talking about in this commission. My background is in linguistics and software development. But I have some non-professional experience, which does align, you know, with the topics that we'll be discussing. So I served as a cycling guide for cycling trips to the outdoor program at the University of Oregon when I was a PhD student. And I've, I've lived in three other countries, which have different, I guess, mobility ecosystems, you could call them. I lived in Finland for a couple of years, and I lived in the Netherlands for a couple of years. And then I've also lived in Tanzania in East Africa for a couple of years. I hope to bring insights from my experiences in those locations to this group. So, yeah, glad to be here.
Cool. Thank you. Keenan, do you want to, we'll just do the introduction from that side.
I'm Keenan Portis. I'm with the Urbana Park District. I'm currently a park planner there. This is about my eighth month being with them. I'm a recent graduate from U of I. This is past May twenty twenty-three. This is about my third meeting, and so far it's been going pretty good. I like the discussions and conversations here, so only look to add more, you know.
I'm Sue Jones, and my professional background, I work out at Parkland as supporting underprepared students. But my bicycle background began with growing up in Greenbelt, Maryland, which, if you're a planner, you had to learn about. And I also bicycle a lot. I'm president of the bike club and involved in other bicycling things around.
I'm Annie Feldmeyer Adams, and I have ridden a bike since grade school for transportation and jobs and all the way through college and now. And I also am an athlete, so I run a lot. And I also love walking, so I also walk a lot. And I'm trained as a creative placemaker, so I'm very interested in place and what makes a place thrive and what makes people want to be in a place. And I currently, so I'm serving as a citizen on this committee, and I currently work at the University of Illinois, and I work in communications.
I'll go next. I'm Sarthak Prasad. I work as the Sustainable Transportation Assistant at Facilities and Services at the university. And I'm representing the university at these meetings. I too love to bike and walk a lot. Just today, I was actually checking my step counters because I was, like, today has been the I've walked a lot today. I'm already at twenty-nine thousand eight hundred or something, and by the end of night, like, I will be at thirty-one now. So this is going to be, like, this is the biggest walk day of, of the year, at least, so far. But, yeah, I, I like to walk a lot. I bike often, but still, I usually walk more than anything else. I don't like to run. Yes. Okay, next, Nancy.
Is it on? Okay. I'm Nancy Westcott. I'm retired from the University of Illinois. I was a climatologist meteorologist. And when I retired, I, I came on to the committee. I used to bike. I used to drive. I don't do either anymore for everybody's safety. So I, I do a lot of destination walking. My vision is really terrible, so I'm particularly interested in pedestrians. And I'm also a board member of PACE, and so I do my best to represent the various disabilities. So that, that's my story.
Bruce Michelson, retired professor of American Lit and was director of the Campus Honors Program at the U of I. Walks, walked across England last year via Yorkshire National Parks and a big chunk of the Camino this past year. Too many bikes in the garage right now. Trying to sort that out. And, let's see, I've been on this committee now for two years, but a hundred years ago, I was the chair of the committee, back when we had logs, you know, and picks to work with, so.
Thank you, everyone. Now, if everybody has had a chance to look at the agenda, are there any changes to it? Hearing none. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from August seven, August fifteenth meeting? So are there any changes?
I move to approve the minutes from August.
Seconded by Bruce. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Or, or do we say proceed? No, approved.
Carried or something like that.
Yeah, it works. Either way. What about the meeting minutes from October seventeenth meeting? Any changes to that? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Sue. Seconded by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. You.
That was contentious.
Do we have any public input? I don't see any public, so. No public input. Unfinished business. I'm going to present some transportation initiatives from the university and let's.
You've got dongles. I think slides was in the title, right? Yes. Yeah, there we go, slides for tonight's meeting. Now, down. Go down, go down. I saw one that said slides. Go on down, keep going down. Yeah. There we go. Now we're talking.
That's, so we're gonna talk about, this is a continuation from our October meetings presentation, continuing our sustainable transportation updates from the university. We will talk a little bit about the TDM infrastructure project improvements that we have encumbered or already worked on this past year. The ADA Transition Plan project updates. And in our last meeting, we talked about, or I refer to the ICAP portal a lot. So ICAP is the Illinois Climate Action Plan, which is our, our university's climate action plan. And this portal is where we report all the sustainability-related projects and updates for them. So just to talk a little bit. It would have been the first slide. Anywho, the TDM infrastructure project updates. We so this was one of the locations on Main and Matthews, which used to have, you can see there was a curb like at the intersection that led to a shared use path.
This is amazing.
Yeah.
It is so welcome.
A little bumpier than the other one.
It's all right, but it is so welcomed, and so many people use it all day long.
Yeah.
So thank you.
And this was actually a student sustainability committee-funded project, so the students paid for it, and we are very thankful for the student sustainability committee. So, yeah, like, this project, this shared use path, bike path, is used by a lot of people, and we had received we had received a lot of complaints because, again, like, you can see there is, there was like a six-inch drop-off. And for bicyclists to navigate safely, they actually had to turn, take a ninety-degree turn, go through the ramp, which was also the ADA curb ramp, basically, so ADA access to this sidewalk. So what we have done is we, I don't have the most recent picture.
I would say, I would say the other thing, too, is I would bike down the street, and because I had to make a right-hand turn onto that curb cut, I had to pull out into traffic, so it was very scary, because if the car behind me did not know that I was about to swerve out and then pop in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just so
So much safer.
This is just so great. Yeah, so thank you, yeah. So then you can just, now you can just scoot in.
You can just go straight through.
Yep, you can either go straight through, but even when you're coming down the street, you can just whoop, gently curve in. It's great.
So some infrastructure project updates from the TDM department. These were encumbered in fiscal year twenty-three. We had some funding for asphalt patching, mill and overlay for several streets on campus. Some PCC patching done just south of Florida on Lincoln. We're working on the preliminary design for future capital project for Donner Drive, Pennsylvania, and St. Mary's. We've just getting the design ready for this. And this one, actually, the preliminary design for Roundabout at Lincoln Avenue, it's actually included now in the corridor safety study for along Lincoln Avenue from Florida to Windsor. So that is happening. Or we are planning on it, and yes, go ahead.
Where is Hazelwood?
What do you mean?
Preliminary for Roundabout at Lincoln and Hazelwood.
Between, Wet Med? Wet Med?
Yeah, by the Japan House.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, whenever I drive down that street and I see those, like, bike crossing, I'm like, I don't see anybody. Like, if someone's trying to use this, it's not safe.
One of the
Cool.
Yeah, one of the major safety-concern corridors, especially like with Hazelwood and St. Mary's. So we're working on that. The past year, we finally were able to install these smart poles. There are three of them, and they have air quality monitor, like, sensors and water quality sensors in them, and we can add more sensors to these poles. They have digital signs, and of course, like, they, they have LED lighting available.
Where are they?
Sorry, these are right in front of bookstore.
Okay.
They're right in front of bookstore. These three smart poles. I'm not going to talk about eco-counters here, because we already discussed those in the October meeting. We can talk about them again, like, at a later time. Some project updates from the ADA Transition Plan. Just FYI, we were awarded one million dollars in funding for this project, to improve ADA accessibility on campus. And there is a, there is an ADA Transition Plan supplement that was published in twenty seventeen or eighteen, which identified several buildings, several locations on campus that needed ADA improvement. And again, like, come up to us that are more urgent, we try to incorporate those in this. All came from the university. We, like, we cannot go after state or federal funds, like, for any transportation-related projects. Because we are not a highway authority. Highway, we are not a highway authority. That's why we cannot go after any state or federal grant for any transportation-related project. So for any of those, like, we actually have to collaborate with the cities or RPC. Some of the projects or that we have completed in the last year, year and a half or two, yeah. The north sidewalk along Stadium Drive between First Street and Oak Street, this was completed in fall twenty-two, early winter, or December of twenty-two. The west side ADA entrance at Armory Building was horrible, and we fixed that one also in fall. The west sidewalk along Oak Street between Gregory Drive and Stadium Drive, which is right in front of DRES, as is the Disability Resources Educational Services Building. That was completed in summer of twenty-two. And we actually added an additional curb cut where the loading zone is, so they can alight. A new sidewalk was added on Hazelwood Drive on the north side, wait, is that the north side? South side. From Oak Street to ISTC. There used to be, like, in front of the, is that a childcare, like, a daycare facility? Yeah, the speech and, the speech therapy or speech and something building. Yes, so there used to be, there wasn't a sidewalk in front of that building or anything leading up to ISTC, so we added a six-foot-wide sidewalk there. There were several sections around Armory Building that were updated, they were repaired. East sidewalk along Fourth Street by Huff Hall, that was fixed using this funding. And the main library ADA ramp on the east side, that was patched up. And the English Building, just south of it, this was kind of like designed by the Landscape Master Plan project, Landscape Master Plan document. Permeable pavers there, so next. This is the completed Stadium Drive on the right. We also fixed the curb cuts, by the way. This is the Oak Street sidewalk along DRES. And here you can see, so there was, there, this was the existing ramp into the building, but we also added one more ramp. You can't see it on this angle, but, or maybe you can just barely, but there, there is another curb ramp that we added so that because we usually have, like, two buses that stop at this location, like, all the time, so it's easier. This is the area that I was talking about, the new sidewalk along Hazelwood Drive. And looks now. The Huff Hall sidewalks, this used to be a mess, so we fixed the ramp here. And so this is the main library, east side ADA ramp. And the English Building area, this is the permeable paper area. So currently, there are two additional projects that we have going on. These are the north sidewalk on Peabody Drive from First Street to Fourth Street, not potentially to Sixth, because we are not doing that part. That would cost a lot more money. The north side, and the second is north sidewalk on Gregory from Fourth to Sixth Street. So this is the area on Peabody. As you can, like, this is an extremely high-traffic area. And the bike, sorry, the sidewalk is not in good condition. The, this project was bid recently, and we have received the bids, and hopefully, we will this, these two projects under construction in summer. That's the current plan. And this is the sidewalk on Gregory Drive from Fourth to Sixth. One additional, like, another project that we are working on is the ADA compliance study. So we are actually, I'm very excited about this, so I will have a couple of students walk around campus with, we are collaborating with this company called Deepwalk. They are based in Research Park and founded by U of I alums. And what they do, what this technology does is with the help of an iPad, as you scan the sidewalk, they create a 3D model. We can, they can identify the trip hazards, cracks, if the slopes are wrong, or basically, they, they will give us, they will tell us what's the, if the sidewalk is compliant or not. So we are going to start collecting data for this project very soon, once or something. Yes.
I think I used to work in a very similar project, ADA, the walkability survey. Is that the same project or different one?
This is a different one.
Okay.
I mean, kind, like, did you do the walkability audit?
Yes, with, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. By the way, like, that was me who did that.
Yeah, yeah, I remember it was you.
Yeah, but this will be in conjunction. So basically, the data that we collected from that, it was very, it was helpful for us to prepare the scope of projects that we just saw, like, in the, the one million-dollar projects. But with this one- But with this one, it will help us quantify how, I mean, with the walkability audit project, we figured out how bad it, or if it was bad or not. This one will tell us how bad it is.
Okay.
And I have talked to them about this, they said that this is, they will pilot it with us or they will consider doing a pilot with us. Mind you, this project does not include crosswalks either. So this is just for sidewalks and shared use paths. I have talked to them about crosswalks as well, so again, this, these, the crosswalk and bike paths, these are potential, potential pilot projects with them later on. All of the data that we, they will collect, that we will collect and they'll analyze, that will be stored in GIS form and they will send it, update us with that GIS data. So one more thing, like, with this data, what we can do with, since it will be in GIS, we can use it for our shops or whenever we have a project, we can mark it as completed or mark it as completed, once done. So I'm very excited about this. Overall, we expect about eighty-five miles of sidewalks to be scanned and yeah. Hopefully, a student will be doing that over the summer.
That was a very pleasant summer work, thank you.
Okay, so I am going to talk a little bit about the ICAP Portal. There is no slide on that, I'm just going to show you guys what the ICAP Portal looks like. So you can go and check it out yourselves. So the ICAP Portal, the website is ICAP, I should have included the website in the slides.
What does ICAP stand for?
ICAP stands for Illinois Climate Action Plan. And the website is icap.sustainability.illinois.edu. And so just a brief background, I can talk about this for hours, honestly, but I'm just going to give a brief overview. In two thousand and eight, the university signed a climate commitment, carbon commitment, which talked about that we will be carbon neutral by twenty fifty. Then in twenty sixteen, we signed a resiliency commitment and which basic, which was that we are going to, it basically said we are going to help our surrounding communities with their sustainability goals. Work with them and we'll try to so the two commitments are called Climate Leadership Commitments. So, once the twenty, two thousand and eight commitment was signed, we developed a document called the Illinois Climate Action Plan, which was published in two thousand and ten. And it is a framework, it was a framework for us to on how we can become carbon neutral. There were goals and objectives. It was, there were a lot of opportunities to improve. So we, like, the ICAP is revised and republished. So the next ICAP was published in two thousand and fifteen. If you ever, like, if you want to learn about it, you can go to the ICAP Portal, you can learn about the history, but you can also read the most recent ICAP or the old ones too, you can, you'll find all of them here. On this portal, what we have tried to do is organize all the sustainability related projects that we know of. And if we don't know of something, we ask our students, faculty, staff and community members to let us know. We add the projects and we add, and then we try to update provide updates on those projects every so often. So for instance, on this home screen, you will see the welcoming page has some information on the objectives dashboard, it's really cool, actually. See, that, that's the thing, like, I can talk about this for hours.
Well, do you want us to cut you off in six more minutes?
Yes, please. But the objectives dashboard, as I said, like, in the ICAP, we have chapters for en- energy, transportation, land, water, zero waste, education, encouragement, resiliency. And for several of these, like, in these chapters, there are multiple objectives. For each chapter, there are certain objectives and several of these objectives have a metrics, a metric associated with it. So the major goal is the total greenhouse gas emissions reporting. Our current goal is to cut down our emissions to, I think it was forty percent of what we had in fiscal year twenty, two thousand and eight and have achieved it. This was the goal for twenty twenty-five, by the way. But this is also twenty twenty-one, which was right after pandemic.
Right.
We haven't updated this metric in two years, so it'll be good to see the numbers. But if you want to see, like, what we have been doing, there are hundreds of metrics on this page, hundred, there are about nine hundred projects, nine hundred and sixty public projects that we have, more than six thousand public project updates and more than a hundred metrics. And you can, again, like, you can go in and check for any of these. When you look at the top of the, like, all the projects are organized within themes and these themes are based on the chapters of the ICAP. I'm just going to show you that one for transportation because that's the main question point here. Our goal is, again, to reduce emissions from transportation, how can we do that? This is how we have organized all the projects here, how can we do that? We can encourage active transportation, we can reduce emission from travel, we can sustainably manage our transportation system, so basically like our road and road network and then encourage low emission vehicles and renewable. So how can we encourage active transportation? Well, we can do these type of things. How can we increase bicycle use? Well, there are five Es that we can do this with. What do we do when we have to talk, like, what, what do we mean by education? We do bicycles, passes, safety materials, and all of these are projects. So for instance, let's just look at the learn how to ride a bike and bike rodeo project. So for, within each project, there is description, there are recent project updates. Several projects will have images associated with them. The project team is who is the project leader, who are the team members, project families and like where this project is located and so on, so forth. The search feature is also kind of powerful, I would say. And I will just show you guys the eco counter data here because that's something that we talked about last time. And it's really cool. So if you just search for eco counters, there is a project for bicycle and pedestrian counts. Within this project, we have listed this, this has to be updated, by the way, I need to update the description, this is a very old description. But again, same thing, we have a description, we have recent project updates, images. But on this website, we've got the location of each, each eco counter that's been installed. So currently, we have ten that are installed, there are fourteen more that will be installed soon. Or I'm hoping over the summer. We post monthly bicycle and pedestrian count for each of these locations. And again, as I said, there are a hundred and thirty-five metrics and ten of them are just for eco counters, so you can
And say, how's the green street with the new infrastructure, what does that look like?
So this is bicycle counts at Illini Union. And again, we, the last data that we have updated here is from October twenty-three. So you can see, like, monthly, we get about thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand in October, here in September, we, last year, we got like forty-six thousand people who biked in front of the Union. Again, this is, I'll show you the picture of Illini Union. So for this one, this is the eco, this is, this post, this is the counter. And what it does is it has a infrared sensor, which throws infrared on the sidewalk and as anybody walks by or bikes by, they get counted as a pedestrian. That's one of the key points here. If you're on the sidewalk, even if you're on a bicycle, you will be counted as a pedestrian because it doesn't distinguish between bicycle or pedestrian because it's infrared. For you to be counted as a bicycle, you have to go through this bike lane. Here you see the diamond cut, basically that's a called the zelt loop, it's a magnetic loop, so as a bicycle passes through it, it gets counted as a bicycle.
Your six minutes are up.
All right, cool, so that's all, I just wanted to show you guys a little bit of the ICAP Portal, I know, like, it's, it's, it's a huge resource. But it's also a very cool resource, very proud of it, so. So if you guys have any questions, by the way, like, I didn't let you guys ask any question or ask for any questions about the presentation or about the website, if you, if you have any questions. If nothing, I'm gonna go.
Hello, I was supposed to give this presentation back in October. So we've had a pretty full agenda, but I appreciate that I am able to present it tonight. Since October, a few things have changed, I would have probably updated that presentation, but I didn't know about the meeting, so so I'll be, I have a few, like, handwritten notes and other items that I'll talk about, some updates about what this is. And after I talk about light bulbs, then, this is a little bit squirrely, so it's gonna, I'm not sure quite what direction this will take or what we want to do about this. But the sage, the second thing I'll talk about is the Sage Trail, which is, is pretty positive and interesting. So the background on the presentation is, I noticed that, that blue light bulbs we're getting, by blue, I mean, light bulbs that you would see, that's like the color of like your iPhone, your iPhone camera flash or like you'd see in a Walmart parking lot, lot. We're getting installed throughout the city. And if anyone lives, we, most of us, I guess, live in Urbana, you, we have these like round bulbs that throw light everywhere, up into the sky, left and right, up and down, there, there's no control on those, on those lights. The reason they've been successful up till now as infrastructure is that we've used the, the previous light bulbs that were used, I'm sure consumed a lot more energy than the current light bulbs that are being used, but they were a low watt and they were yellow. And so people in my neighborhood who have seen the, the cool light bulbs get installed, have contacted the city, have asked the city if you could please take them out and put a warm light bulb in because a lot of these are in residential neighborhoods, they're right outside people's bedrooms. And the city said, no, they will not, and they will not return the light bulbs. And residents are basically just taking matters into their own hands. They're doing stuff to city property to stop the light pollution. And it's, so it's not a great situation for the city to be in. So I think we can do better and I think I have a pretty good solution of how we can do better, so. First off, I'm just gonna do a real primer on yellow versus blue LED light bulbs. Higher Kelvin means more blue light, which resembles daylight. Daylight is good for us, right? Yes, but only during the day. Blue light at night disrupts circadian rhythms for all living beings. Blue light is what our TV screens, smartphones and computer monitors emit. Blue light is bad for bugs as they see a smaller portion of the visible light spectrum and are attracted to blue light. Example, moths only travel at night. And one thing we recently found out is that moths, basically, the reason moths, if you've ever seen a moth be attracted to a light, you've noticed that its back is to the light and you're like, what are you doing, why are you killing yourself this way? It's because moths are used to navigating by a light in the sky, so they're used to a darkness. So as long as you have a darkness and a yellow emitting bulb, the moths don't care. So that's just one of the, it's one of the situations. And then I'll have another example that I'll share later of what's happening to crickets, because it's happening in my front yard. Yellow lights has additional health benefits aside from deterring insects. Warmer colors help promote your body's natural sleep cycle and the release of melatonin. Yellow light stimulate, simulate sunset to tap into your human circadian clock. LED products allow a choice of colors and choosing a color will set the mood of your space. So which color is more pleasing to take a stroll under? So a lot of people don't know that, I, I've had a wide variety of jobs in my life and in high school, I worked at a store and I sold lighting fixtures. So that was when I became very interested in lights and light bulbs. And so a lot of people just don't know, like, an LED, the bulbs that the city's installing honestly could be pink, they could be gray, it's LED, invented at the University of Illinois, they can be any color. So Harvard Yard versus a Walmart parking lot. Should an evening walk in Urbana feel like a stroll through a park or a parking lot? Which space has higher property values? Which space would people leave their curtains open, allowing more eyes on the street? So issues that I'm bringing up is, once you put on those blue lights, you are depressing property values. You are absolutely bringing property values down. And I personally have one, one, two, I have like five of these lights around, and I have a corner property. So I'm really not excited about blue lights being installed there. And the other issue I'm having is the one, they have replaced one of the lights with these these blue lights and I have to close my curtains, absolutely. The light is just, I keep thinking I left like a back porch light on or something and it's just blinding, like it just comes right into your eyes. It's really bad. So this is an example. On Nevada, this was the first time I had seen it. I was going for a night walk and suddenly I turned down Nevada and I had to like squint. I also have pretty bad vision, so I can't, my eyes can't handle abrupt changes in light. And all of us have seen this on the new cars, on the cars with the new LED lights. It's absolutely blinding. So this is, the cool light bulbs have been installed on Nevada. Residents are not happy about it. This is, you can kind of see the difference here, the warm lights on Oregon versus this more daylight appearance on Nevada. And again, we'll go into, a real misunderstanding is, is, is that people think more lights creates more safety for humans. It's, it's absolutely not true. I've known it for years, but more data now makes it clear. It is actually not safer. But we'll, again, I'll get into that in a minute. Warm lights on Oregon, cool lights on Delaware, and as you can see, it's blowing out, it's not giving, there is never any night then for any of the plants around that, around these lights. There, and animals, there's absolutely no night for them whatsoever. And so that was my initial presentation, just because I didn't really, I didn't really understand. I, I mean, I kind of thought it was gonna be a simple fix. And then as I talked to people, I realized the city really was not gonna fix it. So that was sort of sad to me. So since then, I have realized that the City of Urbana does have an outdoor light ordinance, which they are absolutely breaking. And it was created in 2009. It's a very straightforward ordinance. If you want to see, a lot of it is just basically lights down, not lights up, not lights out. Like the Bruno Law Offices down on Green Street, I had someone install a bunch of bright white LED lights that are absolutely going right into the apartment buildings across the street. Everybody has shut their curtains, you know, blocked out all the light they can. So there, so anyway, there's a 2009 City of Urbana Light Ordinance. And since then, I've, I've figured out, I'm working on a strategy of how to pursue a dark sky ordinance and I'm working with folks in Champaign. I will be figuring out who to work with, with the University of Illinois. And then in Urbana, I've got a group of people. It's, it's an interesting question because with bikes, like I'll say, we need a bike lane. And people are like, eh, I don't ride a bike, I don't care. But with this, like it abs, people are absolutely, when I just put out a call for, are you interested in this? I got many emails back from my neighbors. And so we'll be putting together a little group of people to figure out how we can put together a transition plan, because that's the concept. The concept would be a slow transition over a period of time. And it's really an educational issue. It's, it's less of a, you know, no one's trying to be evil by putting in these lights. They think, wow, for less money, we can get way more bang for our buck. It's a real engineering thought process, honestly. Like, I can put in this low watt light bulb, get way more bang for my buck on this, and, and it's cool. And I just want to read a few data points on it. And people, increased exposure to light at night disrupts sleep cycles, has been linked to cancer and cardiovascular disease. The ecological impacts of light pollution can affect the reproduction pattern of male crickets, causing them to chirp during the daytime instead of at night, when they typically call mates. And that absolutely started happening in my front yard and it really freaked me out. I couldn't figure out why the crickets, I, I just couldn't figure out what they were doing. And then when I started looking into this, I was like, oh geez. In many cases, LED installations have worsened light pollution. The high initial investment and durability of modern LEDs means cities need to get the transition right the first time or potentially face decades of consequences. And that is why, right now, this is very important. Because as you all know, once you put these bulbs in, they last for a very long time, which is the point. Like, a lot of positive things about this. But we gotta get it right. The 3,000 K color temperature now exceeds the IDA guidelines for outdoor lighting. Researchers agree a warmer temperature of 2,000, 200 K is a better cutoff. Bluer, cooler tone lights with the higher Kelvin ratings have shown the clearest evidence of disruption to the circadian rhythms of people and animals, which causes a cascade of health and environmental impacts. For light pollution researchers, the key hurdle to overcome is no longer technology, but communication. The biggest obstacle we have to making more progress in this realm is lack of awareness and education on the part of people that are in municipal governments. There was an intrinsic belief that the issue was simple, light is good and darkness is bad. And the other concept is dark sky, not dark ground. So once you start reading the dark sky ordinances, and we do, I don't know if any of you know this, but we have, most, probably you all know this, that we do have, it's a big deal. We have a dark sky park in our County Park District. Man, like that's just a huge deal that we have that. Illinois actually has quite a few dark sky communities, ones that are our size. So it is, it is possible. One of my thoughts is that I would work with Granger Engineers to see if we can figure out how to cap the lights in Urbana, because that's really what we have to do, is we have to send the light down. So we have to figure out a cheap, workable solution to get that light going down. And obviously, we gotta switch out those light bulbs. Light pollution experts generally say, oh, that there's no substantial evidence that more light amounts to greater safety. In Tucson, neither traffic accidents nor crime appeared to increase after the city started dimming its streetlights at night and restricting outdoor light, lighting in 2017. They concluded there's little evidence of any impact on crime rates on the affected streets. In fact, perpetrators seem to seek out better lit adjacent streets, which makes perfect sense. It's counterintuitive. It's one of those weird, counterintuitive things. So at the end of the day, there's a real entrenched human fear of the dark. So on my end, I don't know quite what BP, if BPAC can do anything, but I know on my end, what I'm starting is just to try to build a coalition of people in these different spaces to try to start moving in that direction. And Champaign in particular is like, like, as you know, Sarthak, you worked on the Savoy, that Savoy lighting that went in. There's this beautiful dark sky lighting that went in on this trail that links Savoy to, to the University of Illinois. And it's absolutely gorgeous. The lights actually come on as you move through the space. The lights are low to the ground, but you can see. So that's like an absolutely, I think, a great example of locally, the direction we need to move for, for this type, for what we need to do. And it will, you know, absolutely increase property values and be wonderful. So it'd be amazing if we could be a dark sky city, you know, in the next 10, 20 years, would be phenomenal. And it would be a really big deal. So it's basically looking at, I'm basically gonna have to strategize how to pursue a dark sky ordinance and develop a transition plan. And Tucson is, I've been in Tucson, I don't know if any of you visit Tucson, but Tucson's a way bigger city than us and they are absolutely dark sky. So that's, that's what I have to say about that. I don't know if anyone has questions or thoughts or ideas.
Well, I do think that working with the engineering school is a really good idea. And also, you might want to talk to the Natural History Survey and talk to some entomologists.
Yeah, I reached out some, yeah, I reached out because I think that, like what we're gonna need is, I don't know if any of you know what hawk moths are? Hawk moths are like about as big as your hand. And hawk moths definitely will not be able to survive with this new lighting. But hawk moths only come out at night and that's, that's what, not, essentially, they do. They come out at night, the first, I've seen quite a few of them, but there is, there is actually a crew that lives over by the Idea Garden. If you're ever sitting on one of those little benches and suddenly at night, you're gonna see something the size of hummingbirds just come flitting around your, your ankles. And, and it's absolutely the most gorgeous thing and they're attracted to a very specific native plant and they feed on that native plant. And I am obviously going to be planting those plants in my yard because I want the hawk moths because they're so cool. But I was thinking that would be, one thing would be just to say, have moth month and like, you know, have a moth. Because we don't have, I've talked to astronomers here, we actually don't have the ability to say we, if, if we could like, basically, we need a thing that everybody agrees on. This is why we're doing it, right? So I can't, astronomy is not gonna work for us. Our astronomers are actually going to Chile and they're going to Tucson. Maybe if we go dark sky, we can, we can get them to come here and do research, but at the moment, they're, they're going to Tucson and they're, and they're going to Chile. So it would be great to work, so my theory is, the entomologist is to start working that angle and just do moth month and have the hawk moth, you know, the gorgeous hawk moths be our, be our rallying cry. Yeah.
Annie, could you send the notes that you have to the commission as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Yeah. And those are, the notes I've been using to, once I ask, if people are interested in the, if people are interested in dark sky, these are the notes I share with them, just because I'm trying to keep it a really simple narrative. I'm not, I don't want to get too far down in the weeds because it's not gonna be a fast change. I don't want anyone to think it will be. But there are simple things we can do by just educating, you know, like even when I was walking over here tonight, you know, the high school has, it just, I mean, this is the thing, is right now, everyone's buying these cheap LED lights and they're like pointing them up, pointing them around, you know, and they're like, the high school just installed a couple by their, by their existing LED sign, which was hilarious. And it's, they're just blinding. Like, I, I literally cannot see when I walk by it because they pointed them up instead of just down, down, down. Like, just really simple. So it's just kind of, it is a basic education issue because people really do, they don't, you know, they don't realize that we're turning everything into a Walmart parking lot. And, and those are pretty unpleasant places to be, frankly. So I don't want my city to be like that.
I just have a thought. My background is urban planning and I learned some landscape architecture when I was in school. I, I think you maybe consider asking some landscape architects that they know how to do the lighting along with the nat, the nature and make it both beautiful for human and also healthy for the nature, I know, animals, insects, the beautiful mouse.
Thank you. I will see what, we can do that. The other thing would be to, the City of Urbana can get grants. For a variety of reasons, we are, we are able to get grants. So if anyone sees any grants about this, I haven't quite, I haven't done any research on it. It was one of the things I was gonna ask my working group to look into because if we do need to transition, you know, all the lights in Urbana to something, because honestly, we cannot get dark sky until, we cannot get dark sky, be called a dark sky city until all the lights actually do point down, like 100%. There's no, but it, so it is, it's, it's literally just an educational issue and it is working with new infrastructure. Anytime new infrastructure comes in, like what you did with that trail going out to Savoy, you just do dark sky, no questions asked. And the other issue I've had up till now is that people say, well, the university's not on board, so what's the point? Because they're, because obviously, there's that massive stadium that gets used 10, 15 times a year, I guess. And people, you know, and I'm like, well, you know, you can do dark sky stadiums, honestly, but there are, like the, there's only one way through it, is just talking to the university and figuring out how we can make it happen. And anytime they do a reno, renovation, you just, you put in dark sky lighting. Like, you, you think through it and you try to figure it out. It, it's just, it's just a matter of like getting people to stop thinking, we gotta light everything up like a Walmart parking lot, because that's not great. It seems like a, I totally understand why it seems like a great idea, but it's not.
By the way, just FYI, that Savoy Bike Path or Shared Use Path, that's actually Savoy's, not the university's.
But didn't the uni, who did the, who, I thought the university worked with that?
We worked with them.
Yeah.
But it was still Savoy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The university worked with them. It's not a, yeah, Savoy, I don't know if they would have pulled that off without, you know, with the partnership. Who did the design work on that? Ooh, if you could find out who did the design work on that for me, that's the person I need to talk to. That would be incredibly helpful. Yeah, yeah. Because I know lighting designers in Chicago, but essentially, I need a lighting designer who understands this current environment and who could work, who I could work with. That would be awesome.
So those lights, they're programmed, those are smart lights, like only the ones, I don't know, it's been a very long day.
It's all good. It's all good. Just if you can give me the name of the, of the lighting designer.
I'll, I'll try to find.
I would totally reach out to them and see if they could advise me and help me kind of, kind of wrangle people.
Yep.
All right. So here is something that's actually pretty fun and doable, implementable, actually, within our lifetime. So let's do this. I think it's always important to have like a couple of projects going, one that's like super long term and one that you're like, yeah, we're gonna see this one through. All right. So this one is feeling much better to me. I'm gonna introduce it to everybody. A lot of you have seen this, a lot of you haven't. I was supposed to present it to the Historic Preservation Committee in February, but that meeting got canceled. I'll be presenting it to them in March. The first time I presented this presentation to the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Commission was in April 2023. The Sage Walking Trail for review and for folks who are new, is based on the successful turquoise trail walking tour, a two and a half mile loop through downtown Tucson that highlights structures and 23 sites of historical interest and is marked by a turquoise line on the sidewalk. The turquoise trail, the bright blue turquoise color was chosen because it was the only paint the City of Tucson had available that did not signify a water line or underground The bright blue four inch turquoise line is on the sidewalk, not on the street. So the line, the, the machine they're using to paint this line is the same machine that you use to paint lines in the street, if that is of any use and helpful to anybody. Walking the turquoise trail, you will loop by hotel entrances, restaurants, bars, murals, sculptures, historical markers, historic neighborhoods, museums, parks, landmarks, and city buildings. It's an enjoyable way to explore the city without a map or mobile phone and not get lost. As a visitor to Tucson's downtown, you'll find it hard to miss and easy to learn about and discover the map with an internet search. So I was there for a wedding and I was like, I just Googled like, what is this line? Why do I keep seeing this, this line everywhere? And then up popped a map, up popped an exclamation, and, and it's a loop, so you're not gonna get lost. So here is, this is actually a printed map, I think it's a PDF. But you can see there's little numbers and letters and there's things that explain stuff. And it's very cool because it gets you, you're basically walking like a local. It allowed me to get into, into like neighborhoods and see historic houses and buildings. I walked through a massive parking lot in a convention center. It was very cool. Like you see this park here, really, I'm not showing you the interesting parts, but it's a really cool park, which I would not have found on my own. And so as you can see, this is some new, new sidewalk infrastructure they put in. And the, the line just goes right along the edge of the sidewalk. And then you can see there'll be like a number 12 in a circle and you'll be like, what's going on? And you'll turn around and see this cool sculpture. And you can read about it if you want, or you can just look at it. Could Urbana have a Sage Walking Trail? The Sage Trail would be a two, I'm not sure if it's two or three, two mile loop through downtown Urbana that highlights structures and 20 plus sites of cultural interest and is marked by a continuous four inch purple line on the sidewalk. If that loop is successful, we could pursue a three mile trail, a green loop from downtown to the university. What will you see on the Sage Trail? Walking the Sage Trail, you'll loop by hotel entrances, restaurants, bars, murals, sculptures, you get the idea. It would be an enjoyable way to explore the city without a map, mobile phone, and not get lost. It would connect the Urbana Farmers Market to downtown and the Rose Bowl's back porch with live music. Who's your audience? Residents new to the city wanting to explore and exercise, visitors to the university looking for a guided walk, tourists interested in historical markers. And for me, one of the things I've missed, I lived in Chicago for many years and there is the Lakefront Trail there. And I just missed having this like shared space where people were exercising and moving. So I think it's just kind of nice to have the space that you're. So I think it's just kind of nice to have the space that you're like, oh, you're walking the trail. Yeah, I'm walking the trail. So, and then we have a list of partners, walking grants, America Walks, Urbana Free Library could host the map, Urbana Arts and Culture Commission, Urbana Historic Preservation Commission, Urbana Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the Urbana Park District, University of Illinois, MTD, Vioride, Hotel Royer, Urbana. It is two miles. Look at that. So, so up till now, we've kind of just been playing around with the idea. I've finally got a really nice two mile route, according to Strava. It's two miles. There is one tricky point with the route. If any of you know where Lille School is, Lille School has a, there's a public sidewalk that runs between the school and the, and a, and a green area where the students play. There is a door there that the principal may or may not want us to walk through the school for this. I can alter the route, but at this point I think that's less important than, than actually start, starting to move this project forward. Yeah. Because I really just wanted it to be exactly two miles. It was really my obsession. So basically, I kind of, I went out and I did a sidewalk survey and I was taking mad notes when I realized like we could actually have Deep Walk do the sidewalk survey for us. I went out, yeah, I did a walking survey of spaces and places because the, you know, will, there are, there are streets on this that are not ADA accessible. Lucky for us, the first two miles would actually be cheaper than the second three miles because the first two miles are a lot through downtown, which has fairly new infrastructure. And it's in fairly good, it's in fairly good shape, as you can see from these existing photos here. And so I, my theory is about a third of it would have to be updated. I have no idea what a mile of new sidewalk costs, what a half mile of new sidewalk costs. I truly have no idea. I was trying to look at your slides, sorry Zach, and do some math on that. But we do, the city of, thanks to BPAC and Bill Brown, the city of Urbana does have a specific pot of money that is for updating sidewalks. So I think we could kind of get into that pot of money and update the sidewalks on this walking trail. Once again, we agreed on a route and I will get into what, what that could, how we could start moving the project forward. The other thing we'll need is two miles of paint. I clear, I have no idea how much paint would cost. We might even be able to get like one of the paint companies to donate it. So I'll just quickly walk you through, if you're like me and you're terrible at reading maps, I'm just going to verbally walk you through, if you were to start in front of the Hotel Royer, walk towards what used to be the Iron Post, walk towards what is currently the Bohemia. You would take a right, Bohemia is a clothing store. It's a lovely store. You would take a right, you'd head down Main Street, you would do a mid block crossing, head towards Cinema Gallery. You would walk through the alley, you would take a left after the alley. You would head towards the Rose Bowl, which has that amazing mural on it. After that, you would take a right and head down the street towards the Korean restaurant. I can't remember. Oh, Masita Grill. You would head towards Masita Grill. You would go down and then you would take a left where, and head towards 25 o'clock brewery is and the African grocery store and the African restaurant. And you would walk over across the Boneyard Creek. Once you, the route I have us going to the, there's a Burr Oak that is marked with a historical marker. I have it going up to looking at the Burr Oak. Once you, once you see the Burr Oak, you then head towards this, Mama Dee's has this nice little sidewalk infrastructure that's been put in. You walk through a giant empty parking lot and you see a gorgeous mural on your right. You then head over above the Boneyard Creek and you head through, through, across the street and you head towards the Station Theater. And then you start heading back towards downtown after that. I really worked on mid block crossings because it actually allows you to just keep moving. You don't have to stop. There's no stoplights. So you head up to what used to be Black Dog and you cross the street there. You head up to the county building. There's a mid block crossing in front of the courthouse. You cross there, you head through a sidewalk behind there. You head towards what I personally call the parking lot for the two little post office boxes there. It's a nice little empty space that we could do something with maybe. You head there, you head towards Amara Yoga and then you head towards the Co-op. You cut across the street. There's a little sidewalk. Once you make it through that parking lot, you are then in a residential neighborhood. You head through that residential neighborhood, you head towards Lille School. You, as you can see, I have a little picture there of the little gate that we may or may not be able to walk through, that is Birch. You head, you go right down Birch, you then end up on Green Street and, you know, no, you go past Green Street and then you take a right. You end up on the other side of the Urbana Free Library, which is very helpful for people because there is a bathroom and there is water in there. You walk in front of the Urbana Free Library and that is your two mile loop. So I think the next steps for me would be if BPAC could offer a resolution of support for a walking trail. Because I think the next steps are to pilot temporary markings on the sidewalks and signs. And so my thought is, is we could do temporary markings, which would be like chalk paint that would maybe just look like birds or something, like purple birds on the ground. Or I would have to just figure out some sort of stencil. And so we can use chalk paint, which is fairly permanent, works pretty good. And also put little, I could build a quick little website that would have information about the Sage Trail on it and make, maybe make little signs with a QR code to that website. And then we could just get feedback on the loop, feedback on what people think about it. So that's what I sort of think the next steps would be. It is city property, so the city does have to approve this. So my theory is, is if I can get Urbana to approve, Urbana, if I can get the park to, no. The Urbana Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, that was the direction I was trying to head that, to approve this. I'm also going to be presenting to the Historical Commission and get them to approve it too. And then at that point, I might be able to present to City Council or I could talk to John and ask him what he thinks next best steps are of who would, who would want to present it to. I know there are art grants that we could apply, you know, I could apply for an art grant, I guess, to pay for the, you know, figure out funding for different variety of things. But I think at this point, it just should, you know, it should be a pilot project. And I know the city also has some money for pilot projects. So to me, it feels, it's a pretty, it's a pretty sweet route. I kind of just want people to walk it and I kind of just want people's feedback on it. I want people to say like, this works, this doesn't work. The three mile route to the university is really wonderful. That will take some wrangling, but it is really gorgeous. You, you, you head down, it's really fun. Like you'll see the American Football House, which is sort of a thing, if, if you even know what I'm talking about. There are murals, you get to see the Mastodon, you get to see Bread Company, you head down Michigan Avenue. It's really, and then Carl Park. So it is a pretty gorgeous, it's pretty gorgeous. But I think to start with, we need to kind of get this one going and this one making sense for people. And we also need to figure out like how much it's going to cost. So that's where I'm at. So. Yeah. All right. All right. Walk the, walk the, what do you need? Like I'm not a, I'm like, I'm not a great map person, so I'm like doing the best I can here. This, this works? Does this work? Okay. Yeah. And I might be able to, I mean, this one's from Strava and.
Make it navigable.
Yeah, well. Yeah. Also, someone was telling me I could easily put this on Google and that there's a, not Google. What I really want is a map on Google Maps. So I got to figure that one out because I, I guess it's not, people said it's just, it's difficult to figure out how to make it on Google Maps. Because then that would be, that one's a URL. And that one you can just turn on in your audio and it'll just go, go left, go straight, go right, right? Like it'll give you the whole, like all the nonsense is there. So why don't I make that my next goal is to get a Google map going. It's my understanding, it's not too hard to figure out, like, once you figure it out, you figured it out. But it's more just the learning curve of trying to figure out how to make one. Because I think that in the long run is where it should be hosted, just on a Google map. Yeah. But yeah, it's actually, it's, it's pretty fun. I've done it quite a few times and I'm, it's pretty fun. It's actually just kind of fun. I just did two miles. That's kind of cool. So I think it's going to be good and I know people are really supportive of it. People are very excited. The city is excited about it. People are very excited about it. But it is sort of like, what are the next steps? Because you do want to, whatever you make this route, you do not want to change it. Like you just want this to be the route and, and, and we go forward. All right. So why don't I share out, my next step then will be to share out the, share out the two mile loop and learn how to make a map on Google. I can do it.
Thank you, Annie. So I don't think we can do any report, like the item number F or number G. So do we go straight up to announcements then? Any announcements?
The Prairie Cycle Club is planning to revive its annual tour, starting at the Gibson City Hospital. And it'll go to Middle Fork, which is the Dark Sky Park. And another loop will go to Lake of the Woods and it will be on June 1st. And there's also, the forest preserve is planning a supported ride. The pedaling preserves that, if it's like last year, it'll start in St. Joe, but this is, that would be in August. St. Joe and go to Middle Fork and lots of stops along the way. So there's good things happening. We, that we haven't figured out yet. But it would be, you could make it a century because from the Gibson City, the, the Middle Fork Loop would be like 40 miles and the Lake of the Wood Mile would be 20 mile, would be like 30. So, you know, it would be the good kind of distances that people want. And Gibson City Hospital is going to do tons of support, so that makes that stuff easier. Yeah. They had the hot breakfast the time we kind of got rained out. And it was really nice to have lots of towels because hospitals do that.
Anything else? I can, couple of announcements. So Vioride will be bringing, like they're planning on like doing their relaunch for spring in March. Or their plan is like first week of March, they'll start then, but based on the temperatures, they'll try to have everything, like their fleet back by the end of March. And think of any other announcement right now. Any future topics?
Oh, I'm just curious. Bicycles are pervy, are pervy.
For education or, yeah, yeah.
I think.
Somebody from next door.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be good.
I would, I guess one announcement I have is that there's a Netflix series, which is sort of irritating to watch, but I made it through all of it and it's on something called Blue Zones. And Blue Zones, the simple explanation is, and you, almost all Americans spend 90% of our lives within 20 miles of home. That's where we focus using evidence-based lessons of longevity known as the Blue Zones. We improve streets and park designs, public policy and social involvement, involvement so that it's easy for people to make healthy choices. So Blue Zones, the, if you watch the documentary on Netflix, it's sort of irritating. But when you get to the end, you realize this guy has actually created policy in the United States to create, so cities are going to become Blue Zone cities. So if you go to the website, bluzones.com, you will see that Elbert Lee, Minnesota, Spencer, Iowa, Fort Worth, Texas, and other cities are becoming Blue Zones. So I think we, we have so much, when I was watching this, I was like, we have so many, there are so many things that we already can check off the boxes on being a very successful Blue Zone city. It would also, I think in the future, this is a topic that I will bring up probably another year from now. So just, you know, put this away in the back of your head somewhere, unless somebody else comes across it. But just be aware that it's, it's going to be a new, new designation that cities are, people are going to be looking for in cities. And it's, I think it's, I think it's very healthy because they talk about walking groups. They talk about, like, it's not just about, it is about infrastructure, but it's also about building, community building and getting people to work together and get to know each other and building like lifelong friends and all the things that make living in a city lovely. So I just, I just want to say something to think about and I'll worry about that once we get the Sage Trail going.
I just remembered something, like there was a discussion about, because I came across walk friendly communities type thing. Was there a discussion about that at BPAC sometime in the last year, two years?
I mean, if you look at a house, if you're trying to buy a house, there's walkability scores on all those things. And what you're trying, are you asking if there's like the same way we, we're like a gold level bike city?
Yep, yep, yep.
I cannot answer that question for you.
Yeah, because I, I did come across, there was this one thing called walk friendly communities. But it's not for universities. I inquired about that.
Right, right.
But I don't know, like if we talked about it at BPAC.
I think we talked about it and they have complicated algorithms.
Oh, okay.
And we have complicated infrastructure.
Yes, yes. Yep.
But we can form walking groups.
Yeah. Yeah. A couple of future topics from me, I can, as you all know, like we are working on a bike plan update. And hopefully in April, there may be a public input type thing. So maybe after that, so maybe in May or something, I can present the projects and the goals and objectives from our bike plan. And I'm thinking about eco counter, like presenting the actual eco counter dashboard to show what kind of data we get. But let's see, like, maybe we'll, I can do that in May or April or June or something like that. I won't be here in March, so not going to happen in March.
I would, just as a person who does communication stuff for a living, people love. I would, just as a person who does communication stuff for a living, people love big numbers, and that would make some great social media. How many people rode bikes? Because you don't really see, like, cars, like, so many cars, but the cars are actually really big. And so they, they take up a lot more space versus bikes. You, you don't under, you don't, you don't see the, just the number of bikes and people walking unless you see those big, beautiful numbers that I suspect you have on those ecocounters.
So I can do that probably in May or April, May or June.
Oh, at some point, yeah, we'll have to bring in the Lincoln Corridor study. I'm very excited about that. Can't wait to see what RPC is doing, and so at some point, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, I think so. Like, if there isn't anything else, I move the meeting adjourned. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.